I just started the recording.
Okay. Already 6:46, I'll call the meeting to order. You know, roll call. Gary, Julie, Hillary, Molly, Megan, Susan, Michael, and Mary McGrath. All righty. Review and approval of the minutes. We didn't take the minutes last time, did we? This is common already. And is, hey, excuse me, Alberta. For the two of you that just joined us, we had the roll call, well, call order and roll call. And we're on the review and approval of minutes, the regular minute meeting minutes of December 8. Mary, do we have to have written minutes and submitted, or does the recorded Zoom count?
I really don't know. I assume you would have to hand something to somebody. Or is this recorded via the town? I'm not sure.
All right, I'll, I'll check and see on that then.
Right. What have you been doing with the minutes?
I normally take the, the meeting minutes, but I was not at the last meeting.
Right, so they were recorded, so they must have been handed to somebody.
Check on it. I'll check on it.
So what do you do after you type them up? Julie, you send them in to somebody, you via?
Like, I am on iCompass right now, and so I'm actually taking the meeting minutes while we're on this. And so then there's a little, on iCompass, there's like a button that you push when you're all done, and it submits them to the Conservation Commission admin, and then they-
Okay, okay.
And then usually what happens is when I go to pick up the mail every week, well, just before our meetings, she usually has the minute minute. I'll, I'll print it up, and then I, you know, we, we-
Yeah.
We approve of them, and I sign them, and then probably a month later, when I get in for the mail again, I hand them into what- is usually the way we've been doing it.
If, if there's a recording that I can access, I don't, and I, I'm not sure how to do this, but then I can listen to the last meeting and do it for iCompass for December, if I can listen to the recording.
Well, couldn't your admin listen to the recording too?
Probably.
I mean, I'm saving you, and then somebody would have, you know, you'd have to sign them, but.
Has Nicole done meet minutes for us before?
No.
No.
No, okay. The recording is, I know that she posts it, or like she sends it to someone, and it gets posted on the website every month.
Okay.
I don't know where it's posted, or I could just send you a direct link if you wanted to do that.
Yeah, yeah, that would be fine. If you could send me a link, that might be easier. And then I'll see it in my email, and that will be my prompt to go and do that.
All right, okay. Correspondence, the only correspondence we received was from Connecticut Wildlife Magazine. It's very substantial bill for spray paint. I'm only kidding. It was just the receipt for the trail marking paint. That's the only correspondence received this month. Ah, I don't see anybody else on, so I don't believe there's any public comments. Informational items. I've got Tim Spanos to brush hog the upper field at Whitehall. He's given me a price of $720.
Would you like some? Oh, I got it for you.
He gave me a price of 720. The other guy gave me $4,000. That's the one I said. Tim is the one that did the lower field a couple of years ago. He's going to charge us a little bit more money. It's the same size, but it's considerably more overgrown. Gary can attest to that, so it's going to take him a little bit more effort. I went up there and walked the area with him, showed him what we wanted. And he just requested that there was a tree across the trail that I remove that, and also some of the low hanging branches on the trail. Remove them so he can get his equipment up there. So I went up there with a chainsaw for a couple hours and kind of cleaned that trail up and stuff like that. So I'm expecting him anytime to get up there with it. Already, the PO has already been made out, sitting in the office, the finance office. So as soon as he takes care, he may already, I just haven't a chance to get up there last week, so. So that's the only real information I have. He'll be brush hogging that finally.
Is, so he's brush hogging the trail?
No, no, he's going to be brush hogging the upper meadow.
Okay, thank you.
And I spoke to him about how, you know, in the future, we'd like to maybe do every other year a field. So that next year would be the second year would be say it would be, this year is an off year in the lower field, and he'll get it next year, and then the following year, and he'll go switch back and forth, so we'll be able to maintain those two areas as meadows. Old business, property walks. I went up and walked at the kettle hole. And there's a few small trees, like say like six inches that are down, maybe half a dozen. I mean, you can step over easy. There is one that looks like the top of a tree. It came down, but that's like, it's like five minutes work with a chainsaw to cut it all up. The rest of the trail looks fairly decent shape. You know, the sign, maybe some Windex on the, the sign, on the plastic covering of the sign, maybe cleaning up the the parking area a little bit, raking back some of the leaves. Along the road, though, there seems to be a bit of trash that's, as the cars go by, and they heave off. If I get the opportunity, I'll get up there and I'll try to get the sign and the parking lot and everything else like that. But other than that, the trail looks fine. There's, there's nothing I really see the matter with it. And that's the only property walk I did.
I've done, see, we, we walked Glacier, and that was looking great. I also walked Pocatonic Cove. And that, I didn't notice any use per se, but it did, I did feel like it could use that part where it goes down near the water. It's easy to take a wrong turn there.
Yeah.
You know how there's some, you can turn off and kind of go on that slab along the side there, which I don't think we want most people to go, you know, that, that would promote more erosion than sticking to the proper trail. And so it may be, I don't think it's urgent, but maybe a little work to make the right direction more obvious there could be helpful.
The Pocatonic Cove is the nature conservatories.
Oh, I thought that was on our list, but we don't.
And we, I think we, what we did is we did, we, we put, we put those trail maps up for that Pocatonic Cove?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maps for us. That's why, I think that's why I thought it was ours.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's the nature conservatory. But, you know.
Avalonia, I mean. It's TNC. Okay, well. I think, I guess the only one I've done then is Glacier.
You could draw them a line.
Yeah.
Else has.
Yeah.
Any other property walks? Already. Trailblazers at the, the Conservation Commission maintained properties. Yeah.
I got spray paint. Um, so I'll just give you just, to just to let you know, it took a few times of going to Holdrages to like get this all worked out. I had, I went there once to get the exact, I needed the exact dollar and cents amount in order to create the purchase order. So once I got that, then I talked to Nicole, and she created the purchase order. And then I went back to Holdrages to buy it, or like, you know, to have it charged to the purchase order, but they didn't know what account to charge it to. Apparently, there was no, Holdrages did not have a Ledgerd Conservation Commission account, but they had like 40 other accounts in Ledgerd. So they just weren't sure which one to charge it to, and I couldn't talk to Nicole at the time, so I said, I'll like, I'll talk to Nicole, I'll come back. So I talked to Nicole, and she ended up talking to somebody else, like the person above her, I don't remember his name, he sent me the actual purchase order, I printed it out. Then I went back to Holdrages again, handed over the purchase order, and then the cost was, initially, the cost is different because, like, oh, well, Holdrages charges the discount, but I needed the cost to match, and so we got to match, it was less than 10 bucks, but just like for future reference, if you charge, if you work with a place like Holdrages, they give a discount to, you know, town commissions, I guess. And it ended up getting charged to the proper account, it was linked to the purchase order number. They figured it out once I gave them the actual purchase order. And then I did hear from Barbara Duncan, she'd said that some of the blue blazes on Burton coming from the cemetery to Gallup Hill Roll, Gallup Hill Road were, were missing. So I have a date set that I'm going to go out and, and do some blazing at Burton Trail if anyone wants to join me. I'm going to go Saturday, January 30th, and I'll be there from nine to 12. If anyone wants to come, if you do want to come, bring like gloves and loppers, or we might need to do, you know, like take, I don't know, clean up the trail a little bit too while we're at it. I'll bring the spray paint, and I'll bring the template. So January 30th, 12.
What on trail is this?
Yes, Burton Trail.
Okay, thank you. I heard you, and then I immediately forgot trying to write it down.
It happens to me a lot. Yes, we, I was originally going to do it over the break when my husband had like lots of time off, but the whole spray paint thing pushes back in time and, or ahead in time anyways. That is what it is, so.
And what day is the work party?
Um, I don't know, it's a party, it's, it's just me so far, I don't know if anyone else can make it, but it's Saturday, January 30th.
Okay, perfect.
I'll be there from nine to 12.
From nine to 12?
Yeah.
I think I can make it, so.
Oh, awesome.
I'll join you.
Thank you. Anyone who can is welcome.
We will try to make it too.
Yay. And I'll plan, I know we'll be outside, but I'll still plan on wearing a mask, just, you know, we might need to get close to each other if we're, I don't know, just, just, just to be safe.
Yeah, I'll, I'll wear one, two.
So do you have yellow and blue paint?
I have yellow and blue, yes.
So if more people show up, we could do additional parts of the trail.
Yes, and I mean, there, I only have one set of templates.
But I can make another set.
Okay, I wouldn't be a bad thing to have, because we only have one set right now.
Right.
The other thing, because we did the part, like the yellow trail one way in the fall, I think a year ago, and we, I had like several people there, and it was nice because there was some people who were working on specifically like clearing the trails. Like some of that needed to be done, or sometimes it was like, you know, okay, where are we going to put, you know, where would be a good spot for this blaze? If we put it here, we need to just like remove some of the branches, or you know, or whatever to make it, you know, because it has to, like, you have to have the line of sight to the next one. So, so there's, you know, so, you know, additional hands are appreciated. There's no shortage of work, I'm sure.
It's funny, because I went into purchase some things from Holdrages a couple of years ago, and I guess I just told the town alleged, I don't know who got charged then. Because I didn't do all that paperwork. I don't know who got charged.
Maybe that's more suspicious, but I said, um, they just, they didn't know, or maybe it was the cashier who was working with, she just, she didn't know what to charge it to, and we tried one specific account, and she said, oh, they won't let me do it, so, so I just said, I'll come back with the purchase order, and I worked with somebody else, and we figured it out.
Signage at Burton Trail. All right, contacted Fast Signs, basically a rough idea what I was looking at. And basically, it would be two signs, like we discussed, there'd be one sign at the trailhead, and it'd be very similar to what the other signs we have at the other trails. You know, it would be the green with held by the four by four posts. You know, the sign would probably be about what, five feet by about six feet, or similar to the other ones, roughly. That's, it's not that high. You know, and put the, putting the map on it. I still got to figure out how to get this QR. I'm sure they can put the QR on it, but then I guess there's links and stuff like that, so I guess I have to contact IT at the town or somebody. I will see what Fast Signs says, you know what I mean, on how they, how they go about doing this. You know what I mean?
Um, I've used QR code generators before, like, it's, it's easy to do once you had, like, it's, it's free and, and easy to do, so I think if they have the map, then we could just save the QR, like, we could generate the QR code ourselves.
Okay.
As like a JPEG, and just add that to, you know, the map, or, you know, to have, like, on the, wherever we want to put it, whenever it's, we're ready, we're at that stage.
Great, what's the plan with the QR codes to have?
It would have the trail, the Burton Trail, so you could take your, I guess, your smartphone, and it would send you to a link, and it would give you the trail map. That way, they, they would have the trail map, we wouldn't have to provide paper maps.
Right, so it has something to, they get the trail map they can take with them, even though it's on the sign as well. Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, was what we're looking at. Second one, what?
Or I was just going to say, we could have the map, and then maybe like, you know, a little square placard, or whatever you call it, on the, like, on the wooden poster on the sign with just a QR code, if you didn't want to put it directly on the map, you know, that way we're like changed in the future, or, I don't know, if technology change, I'm sure the maybe, I don't know, I'm just saying, we don't have to have it on the map, it could be like an additional thing on the post or something. So I guess there's multiple ways to do it.
Okay, all righty. And that one there, I would have it say Burton Trail. All righty, now we're thinking about having another smaller sign out by the, that Burton Monument. And basic, I was thinking of something that's probably, you know, 16 inches by 24 inches, something like this. That would be, it would just say Burton Preserve, because again, we don't want people stopping and parking there and stuff like that, but just to let the public know that there is something there. Because the other sign would be on the trail around the back.
You mean at the parklet?
Burton Monument?
It'd be very, in the same, next to the location as the sign that has the Morgan Billings Cemetery.
Oh, okay, not to me, no, yeah.
But I wouldn't call it trail, I'd call it preserve, and I would not put a map on it. What we do is similar to those examples of the signs that you sent me, where it has the town seal. That says the town alleged and has the seal and stuff, and I would put that on that sign there.
Should there be something on it to indicate X amount of feet over is a trail map sign? You know, or some way to say where the trail map sign is?
Or maybe like access with an arrow pointing, you know?
Yes, something. And do you want to put the QR code on that post? So if people want to access the trails from there, they could.
Well, that's the thing about it, is there's, there's really no place to park. You know what I mean? And you've got that curve. There's no shoulder. I'm trying to avoid having people stopping there. I just want to let people know that this is the preserve. You know, like you see, Avalonia has signs at different places to show the people there's a preserve there. Well, I'm trying to do that so the people will know there is something there, not just woods. You know what I mean? And if they get curious as to what the bird deserve is, perhaps they'll then look further. But I really are not inclined to having people stopping there. Because you, you know, you've only got that little place to pull in that way, you fit like one car there, and that corner is kind of fast and blind. And I really don't want to encourage people to be stopping there. Any other thoughts on it?
I agree, simple is better, I think, and I don't put anything to make people think they should stop and read it.
You know. All righty, so as I get to work all the details out with Fast Signs and Tony there, I'll, I'll keep everybody posted, all righty. Hike ledged program, we still working on some things on that?
Yes, so I have a few things about that. I met with the Scott Johnson, the Parks and Rec Director, I can hear myself echoing. Um, I met with him, I don't know, a week or so ago, and he said that, he is very supportive of the program, he said that the Parks and Rec has some extra budget, and he he was going to talk to the Parks and Rec Committee tonight about, like, asking them if they would be supportive of putting some money towards this. What they would like to help us do is to purchase stickers, those non-disposable, like vinyl dishwasher safe stickers that we talked about. So that everyone who registers for the program can pick up a free sticker, essentially. Um, he said, I told him that we had like about 200 people who had expressed interest, and he said, oh, we should get extra, and he, you know, put forth the number, we should maybe get like 500 stickers, and a price for that was about like $200 to $300, depending on the size. So he's talking to Parks and Rec about that tonight, which I'm really excited about. Um, I'm also, I started working on a flyer, but then I realized that I need to like act, to get the content down before I start putting it all together, so. Um, I'm just finishing that up, and then I'll like email that out to everyone, so you can, and it's, it's easier for me to like have the content done before I like put it into the design, so. And what I think, and what it seems like it'll be is like a one-page checklist of the trails or trail areas, and then like a one page about the program, which is like, you know, it's like, what is it? How does it work? Maybe some pictures. So, and then those are going to be in the hike ledger magazine, not, excuse me, carried away here, the ledgered events magazine. And also put those on the website where all the trail maps are. Another thing that I talked to Scott about was doing an updated, like hiking and walking guide to ledger. Um, and so I'm sending him like everything that I have, all the maps, and Fran, who works at Parks and Rec, she is being tasked with putting that together. What else? Okay, I can't think, my mind is blank, so any, anything else? I can't remember.
So it would be our hike ledgered stuff, and then additional places to go walking that we don't?
Um, please close the door. Thank you. Um. Yes, so the, it's not, it wouldn't be like a specific hike ledgered brochure, it would be a guide to places to go, places to hike or walk in ledgered, so they'll probably include like Parks and Rec's other properties and parks, as well as, we talked about, maybe including like swing sets in town or other other interesting information. I think like they had stuff, they want to put stuff out like ticks, tick removal, I don't know, they, they had some ideas of what to include on that, but no, it was not a specific hike ledgered brochure.
So will it include Avalonia Trails and Nature's Conservancy Trails?
Yes, yeah, and that same as before, they're, they're, the current booklet now, which is outdated, has like the Parks and Rec property in Avalonia, and it just, it doesn't have like maps for everything, or, so it's, it's getting a refresh, so they're doing that, I'm just-
About 20 years old, isn't it?
It looks like it's from the 90s, so maybe even older.
Next item agenda. Off-leash trails. Does anybody give any thought into it, any more consideration, any more ideas?
Is this where you want to talk about getting a wildlife survey of Whitehall? That's what brought that up, or do you want to do it separate?
It's listed separately in the minutes.
It's listed separately in the minutes, but what we can do is just table this for the time being until we discuss that.
Okay.
I mean, there's no reason to, like you say, we weren't ever going to rush into it to begin with. So I guess we can move on to the next one would be donating, donations to Eastern Connecticut Conservation District, Connecticut Land Conservation Council, and Avalonia. Remember, we discussed it last meeting? And I'm trying to remember exactly what we spoke about it. Other than that, we thought that all three of them were worthwhile.
We tabled it because we didn't have the budget in front of us right then, so we just wanted to vote on it at the next meeting.
Right. And if I'm not mistaken, did we not have? Was it $1,500, $1,540 left in the budget?
We did end up having enough once we got the budget.
Yes. What other items are we going to be spending on between now and July? The signs can come out of the trail maintenance fund. Whitehall, the brush hogging that comes out of the Whitehall Trust Fund.
Well, we could donate to the two organizations that we have previously, and then wait and see if we have any other things come up, and if we don't, then donate to the, to Avalonia. You don't have to donate to all of them in January.
Right.
Agree.
Okay. So we'll be looking at two of them then, be looking at the Eastern Connecticut Conservation District and the Land Conservation Council.
Were the amounts again?
Oh, they want all kinds of money, but we ain't going to give them all that. Over $1,000, I think in the past, what we've given, 500?
Yes.
And I think one of them was actually less than that.
Yeah, one of them was. All righty, do I have all those?
Yeah, you do.
Just somewhere.
Well, we can make it be the same as it was, if you want. From last year.
Okay, all righty. I believe one was 250.
Yes.
And the other one was 500.
Yes, which would just leave us a little bit, if you wanted to do something else, you would have still money in your budget. Because the trail money is supposed to be for trail stuff, so if something else come along, you'd have to be robbing Peter to pay Paul.
And I don't think we are authorized to do that. One of them is dedicated for something, and the others dedicate for something else.
Right.
So we can't do that. All righty. Now, how am I going to word this motion here? All righty.
That would like to contribute to those two organizations the same amount as we did in 2020?
Yes, yes. What we want to do is make contribution to Eastern Connecticut Conservation District and the Land Conservation Council in the same amounts that we did last year, which will be a total of- which will be a total of 750.
Make sure you put the numbers in, whatever it is from last year.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm trying to say. One of them was five already.
Yeah.
I don't know which one goes to which.
I think ECCD was, ECCD was the 250.
Alrighty.
But I'll look that up before I go back to the town hall. Okay, is that okay? I don't have that in front of me. Uh, wait a minute, maybe I do. I think I spent. We could go to something else while I look.
Are we trying to put a motion on that?
I know, I know.
That's already, I mean, I think I've got it somewhere too, but, well, I think I just have their, uh, their requests. I don't have the amounts.
For simplicity, should we just move them separately so that we have each? Do we decide separately on each one, or?
Yes, we can. Eastern Connecticut Conservation District, looks like that one was 500. And this was it, and then, uh, Connecticut Land Conservation District was 100. But that was 2018, so I think we upped it since then. I'm just looking back at.
Okay.
But that's, that's the first one I found.
Well, wasn't Eastern Connecticut Conserv- District was 500?
Yeah, ECC.
The motion of the people is to, to donate 500 to ECCD?
Yes. Alright, I'll say the motion again once we get the other figures straightened out here. Oh, alright, the motion would be to contribute to the Eastern Connecticut Conservation District, $500, and to contribute $250 to the Land Conservation Council.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? None opposed? Motion carries.
Who, who seconded?
I did, Molly.
Molly.
Thank you. That's what I thought, but I wasn't sure.
Alrighty, I saw the agenda was typed up a little. Saw the agenda got typed up a little. Show the order. So I will vote it to, uh, was it there, uh, item eight? Yeah, assessment at Whitehall.
So, um, I sent you the information I got from, I contacted Robert Askins after I looked for somebody who potentially is capable of making a survey of Whitehall. Um, and he said that he can do a survey of Whitehall as a volunteer, but he doesn't know how much in depth you want to go. And if you want a survey done, like the one that I have a copy of that was done on the Pocatonic Cove Refuge, which is extremely detailed and uh, goes to like 25 pages I have in front of me. That would, he can suggest people who then would get paid for doing something more detailed like that. So our decision, I think, comes down to how much detail do we want? And the reason we wanted it looked at was to see if that's an appropriate place to have off-leash trails. So the idea was to learn what was there and would off-leash trails be a problem in a place that might have something that there shouldn't be off-leash dogs. So that's kind of where we're at.
To my mind, those issues are separate, though. Like, I think it'd be valuable to have an assessment done regardless of whether we're gonna consider it for dogs. Like
I think that, that affects some of our decision, though. They can be considered separate. Um, but if, if you have areas that have something in it that people or dogs off-leash, uh, you might not want them, or you might move your trail if there was something there. So, you know, um, this, um, inventory, it's called, the name on this one says Preliminary Inventory of Flora and Fauna of the Pocatonic Cove Wildlife Refuge. And it was done in 1993. And in 1993, it cost $2,000. But that area is about 100 acres. So when you compare that to Whitehall, I think Whitehall's 38 acres or something like that. So there's a significant difference in the size of the piece of property. And in some ways, there's a lot of difference between what you're gonna look at on the property because being on the cove generated a lot of different wildlife that you might never be considering looking for even at Whitehall. Um, and, uh, I don't know how many of you do any birding, but Robert Askins is, uh, was the, um, person in charge of all of the ornithological work done at the properties at Connecticut College and the Arboretum. So he already, and several other people, have made a list of the birds that they have been already looking at on Whitehall. And if you go to a site called eBird and put in Whitehall, you'll see the lists and the, of all the people who've been there and all the birds that they have seen. So that's one piece that gives us a starting idea of the kinds of things that are on Whitehall around the year, because some of these birding lists are let spring all through summer and fall and winter. So that's just one piece of what's at Whitehall. It tells us nothing about what's growing there other than invasives, which we already know about. Um, but I think those are the kinds of things that we might want to know more about. And even when we have somebody brush hogging the fields, there is potential that there's something in the fields that we should be paying attention to as well. There could be grasses or the, the other things that don't grow in the wooded part of the property, but might grow in the meadow part of the properties. So it's, I think it takes more than any expertise we have if there's something there that we should know about. That's just my feeling and if Whitehall Trust has money in it to pay for it, I think it might be worth it to get done. I could not find a study done like this of Whitehall anywhere in the town hall. I find nothing on record. I went to Roxanne, who has all kinds of records. And she was the keeper of the paperwork for Whitehall. Um, in the late 90s was when she started. She has no information in her records about Whitehall, and I couldn't find anything else. So if anybody knows of something else and where it might be, I'll be happy to go search it up, but I couldn't get any help from anybody.
Is survey required by some government entity? Or are you just doing it for our information?
It's informational.
Okay, okay. I personally, I think it would be a great long-term project to inventory that the properties were in charge of, not all, I mean, gradually, obviously, because these are expensive. But you know, if every few, you know, every five years we do one or something like that, I think that would be a great resource for the, you know, and for scientists in this area who might be interested in doing work on these properties. I mean, they're public property, it'd be great to see them used in many different ways.
And I think the potential is that if there were something like that started, that there might be students from Con College, let's say, or
You've got it.
Who, you know, might be interested in going to a piece of property where there's been previous studies done and they could do comparison studies. And that would add up to a lot of long-term information. Um.
Yeah, or, yeah, there's lots of people who could follow up on something like that.
Um, Bob Askins did give me the name of students that he's worked with who are capable of doing a more thorough survey. But if we want to look for other people, I think we have to, you know, go further afield to find somebody. That's who I, um, connected with, and that was his thoughts that he's willing to volunteer to do a less thorough study of the property, but if we want something more, he'll recommend somebody. And that doesn't mean we shouldn't have more than one person and if they've done previous work, look at what they've done to decide if it's something we would like done the same way.
It's the kind of thing we can get an estimate on?
Oh, I suspect. Well, I, I don't know if they do hourly. I suspect they do hourly because this one has the bill with it. Um, that was paid by the town actually, which I found interesting since it's um, nature conservancy property, but the town alleged paid for it. Um, and it is by hours. And it was done over the course of a year.
Well, you, it would kind of have to be, right, if you were trying to do an impact assessment, so.
Yep.
Cause.
So if in 1993, 100 acres cost $2,000, if you kind of extrapolate that to this many years later, by the time it's done, it might be 2023. You know, if you look at it like that, by the time we get somebody and they start it, um, we'd be close to that kind of timeframe.
You were not able to find a, uh, uh, environmental assessment?
No, I wasn't. Do you have an idea where one might be?
Yeah, because I looked at it and I when, you know, when we first started talking about off-leash, and we were talking about different things like that, and I sent everybody the, what I saw, I read in there. Yes, there is one. Again, it's one of those preliminary type of ones. They also recommended that if you want a more detailed report, you know, you have to go get a, a specialist. But yes, one does exist.
Do you have any clue where it was? I even asked where the file was, the Conservation Commission. Nobody could even tell me.
The file cabinet is, as you enter, going into the mayor's office. We have our, uh, mail, you know, the mailbox, mail slots out on the wall.
Yeah.
And that woman who's sitting at that desk, it's right behind her.
Okay.
Alright, and it should be in there, because I took it out and I replaced it. So it should be in there.
Okay.
There is a Whitehall.
Well, I will go back. Um, and the only other place Roxanne suggested was to go to the land assessment office. And she wasn't in that day, but I was gonna go back there as well. Um, and see what else could be found. Um, but I, I will go back and look again, and if I find anything, do you want me to send it to everybody? Because this one that's 25 pages, I didn't think I could do that. But if it's a short um, thing, I could do that. Do you remember, was it longer, or just a couple of pages?
Oh, no, it's, it's probably 20, 25 pages too.
Okay.
I mean, if you want to go through it and pull up the highlights.
Yep.
So, so recommends that we do this, or this was their findings and take highlights out.
And I, maybe even the index page of what they actually looked at, you know, the different things that they surveyed, if you will. Um, does anybody else have any other ideas of somebody who they might know who does this kind of thing that I can follow up? Or keep your ears to the ground, and if you hear of anything, you know, write their name down on your hand and we'll, you know, keep track of them.
Um, I don't know of anyone, but I do know a botanist at Con College who, he actually used to be on the Conservation Commission here in town years ago.
So.
Chad Jones?
Chad.
Yeah, yes. So, um, I could reach out to him too, if, if he might know anyone. And then the other thing I was thinking was that if, you know, there is that file there that's 20, 25 pages, that I wonder if the person who's there can like scan it in for you and email it to you as an attachment, and then like you could just email it out to everyone. Like, I wonder if, if that's
So this one from Pocatonic? You mean that one or no?
Uh, no, I mean, the one that Mike was referencing about
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I guess then you wouldn't have to go in if they were willing to do that.
Yeah, if I can find it, and it has the person's name on it, I'll ask to have that done. Well, maybe they can just scan it in at the town hall and send it to the Conservation Commission.
Why be able to?
You know, if it's a worthwhile, if it has worthwhile information on it, we might be able to use it as a sample to do others as we're looking at that as a possibility. You know, if we think that covers the kinds of grounds, the stuff we'll want to look at as Conservation Commission, then that might be a good sample to go by or something like that. I don't even know if there's a particular um, way to do this kind of inventory. You know, I was really looking for somebody who could give me an idea that you make sure this gets done or this gets done, and you know, the idea of doing it over a whole year, that makes sense, but.
It, there's gotta be, like, there's a whole industry of doing these environmental impact. So I haven't looked into having one done, but, um, I mean, what about, would somebody at Avalonia be able to advise us or TNC? Like, I feel like they would be, like, TNC must do it for their properties. Um, or at least some of them, and so I feel like.
And actually, maybe now that you're talking like that, maybe, um, here we are paying dues to the Conservation Council. Maybe that's a good resource to go back and ask them how they approach doing that on properties.
And ECCD as well, probably you could point out.
To some, to, yes, okay. I will, I will follow that up more. Because I, I think it's a worthwhile project. I
I work with somebody from, who does a lot of Avalonia work, and I'll just ask him if they have a go-to.
Person.
Um, yeah.
And I think that somehow, Mary, do you know, did they do anything like that on the paint mill property?
I, I don't know. I don't know.
We have an archaeological survey for the paint mill property, but it's not.
Flora and fauna.
Yeah, and for Avalonia, at least for the Leonard part of Avalonia, Bob Askins is the person. Bob and Karen Askins are the people that we go to generally to perform those, um, surveys. There might be people outside of the, like, Avalonia people outside of the committee, but I, I don't know who they are.
Well, there is an Avalonia Town Committee meeting tomorrow night, so that might be a legitimate question to ask.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but if, if anybody else has any ideas, you know, my email is on our um, conservation list there. Just send me names or groups or whatever, and I'll just keep poking around and since it's gonna be a long-term thing, I don't think it's like some emergency. We have to move you know, tomorrow to get it done. We just can be collecting information at this point.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, and then move ahead. Especially if we're looking at doing more than one property on maybe a semi, uh, you know, a biennial basis or something, or every other year do someone. And with the properties we have, you'd get, only get to one every 10 years anyhow, right? Which isn't, I mean, that isn't bad. Unless you had volunteers or somebody doing some in the middle.
Well, and when you have a prior survey too, I think it probably is much faster and easier because And easier because there's a starting point, right? You can start by seeing what's changed and. Yeah, so that finding that prior survey of Whitehall, I imagine would be really valuable and might make it less expensive for us to, I mean. Depending on how old it is, but I can't imagine it wouldn't help.
Oh, I think it would be great, absolutely.
Yeah.
So that's all I've been able to find out and I I'll keep poking away, but. I don't know why I didn't think to go to ECC, but I I will now, so. Now, this is older lady like us. He's pretty sharp. Who is that?
Karen Parkinson.
Okay. I heard a voice in the wilderness.
The voice and saw the name Karen, so then I knew who it was.
I recommend everybody go and check those birds out. There's ninety-six species of birds at Whitehall.
Oh, wow.
And you'd be surprised at the ones that they saw. I was. Yeah, I was surprised.
Ebird is an amazingly addictive pit to fall into. That I recommend. I recommend it because it's great, but like you may never emerge from Ebird. You'll you'll be like posting and.
But before you take a walk on a property, it's worth it to look at those lists. You know, and you can even go to the month. That somebody walked it and created a list, so you have an idea of what to look for. I mean, it's amazing, or to listen for. If you can get good enough, you might not see them, but you might hear them, you know.
That'll be the next generation of our trail maps is like audio.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
You want to work on that, Megan?
Actually, I was thinking this could be a great article for like the lead yard Conservation Commission article in the next. You know, lead yard events magazine, so maybe Molly could, you know. Write something about that and maybe say something about what birds have been seen on what trails. I think it'd be pretty cool.
Even to suggest going to Ebird and looking. I mean, I thought. I never thought to do that, and it's an amazing resource when you're going to take a trail walk.
Yeah, and there is another resource that Molly brought up. I can't remember if it was like last time or two times ago. I forget what it's about, like ecology or oceans, but I think it'd be really cool if, I don't know, maybe we could put.
Oh, map my map my waterway.
Yeah, that was it. That was it. It could be cool if you could put up all these like rabbit hole places for people to go in and explore.
I can I can work on something like that. When's the deadline?
Um, it's in March.
Okay.
Remember the specific date.
Help me remember, but yeah, I can.
Well, you could you could start with something and then say. More to follow, just to grab somebody's interest, you know.
How long are the articles usually just like? I can look at.
I can send you the information. I think it's usually like, almost like four hundred fifty-word limit.
Yeah.
I'll dig through my email and and send it to you.
So you have to use very big words.
Any other whole business come before the commission? Alrighty, new business. Nomination and appointment of commission offices. Alrighty, first one would be. Chair, and I have a nomination to make. I would like to nominate Hillary.
Where's Hillary?
Right there.
She's muted. Yeah, there she is.
I think that needs to be a second, right?
I'll second, I'll second.
I'll accept the nomination.
All in favor? Excuse me, first of all, is there any other nominations? Alright, discussion. I think it's time to have somebody else give a shot. We should rotate it every once in a while. Bring a new perspective, maybe a new emphasis on different things, so that's. My contribution to the discussion. If you'd like to vote on it, if nobody else has anything else.
I think you're biased.
All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed? Alright. Hillary being who? Chair of the commission starting next month, that'd be the month, what is it, February? We're actually immediately. Vice chair. Do I hear any nominations for vice chair?
Hillary, Hillary, the current vice chair, right?
Correct.
I am.
Yes. Then if there are no nominations, I'll nominate myself.
I'll second.
All in favor of me as vice chair?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, that carries. Alright, the next position would be secretary. Are you any nominations? Volunteers.
Julie, do you want to be nominated again?
I certainly do not mind being secretary.
Alrighty, then in that case, I would nominate. Secretary, I have a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This, who's second?
Hillary, I think.
Hillary, okay.
Yeah.
And the last position is treasurer. Do we hear any nominations? Volunteers?
I think it would be good if somebody else. Got to see how people do and. Don't do what they do. Or what they're supposed to do.
I can't hold two positions.
I nominate Gary. Does he want to do it?
I'm quite there yet.
Alrighty, we had similar situation on the. Head commission. And they did table it for a month. But then again, they didn't have any funds either at the time.
Can you talk us through what the what the position entails perhaps?
Well, once a month, I contact the town treasurer. And ask for her to electronically send me a copy of any activities of the previous month. And. We, I tell her when the meeting is and when I would like. To get the response by, so I could have it, because if I had it ahead of time, then Mike could have it to even include. In the minutes. That sounds rather simple, but it doesn't usually work. Frequently, I go down and I. Personally go to the office and ask for the information so that I can have it available. That got a little trickier during COVID, but it's better now. Because they weren't in the office for a long time. But now they're back.
Treasurer or the finance director?
No, I go to the treasurer.
Okay.
And you do that because they're not responsive to the email requests?
Or or I'm not, or I haven't gotten it for the time I requested it, but I would like it for the meeting. And then I have been trying to get the purchase order. Organized, so we know how to follow through on that. And so it was, I think, what, a month ago where finally we got specific direction on how to do a purchase order. And I think a piece of the issue has been. That people keep changing positions. I think over the time I've been on the commission, we've had like four different people. Who've handled our agendas and minutes and everything we've done, so somebody. Gets their fingers into knowing what the position involves to. Take care of the Conservation Commission, and then. It isn't very long before all of a sudden they've moved to another position or they've left town employment. So there's not real great continuity in being able to have the same person there. And always go back to the same person and ask them what they do. Plus, they change what they're responsible for. They don't keep the same responsibilities, it seems, all the time. Like when we changed how we did minutes. That changed how the person. Who handled the Conservation Commission minutes did it, which we just realized now, nobody did the minutes for last time. That doesn't make sense to me somehow, when you leave a position and you were responsible for doing minutes for some commission. When the next person comes in, it should be, well, you better check on. You're responsible for this, find out how you do it. It's always this same day of the month. You would think that that would be some kind of automatic. Exchange of information, or you'd get a list of what your responsibilities are and. I've found there's issues with that. I and I don't know what the issue is because I'm a volunteer in this thing, you know, I don't want to get into anybody else's issues, but. If you're trying to follow it up, it does not make life easy as a volunteer on a commission. To be able to feel like you have a handle on. What you can do, if you know what I mean, just like looking for this. Survey, which I thought Mike told me one had been done. And when I went looking for it, I went to three different offices in the town. And I had nobody could even tell me where the Conservation Commission file was. Now, that makes no sense to me at all. And that's. So that's where. I found my frustration. I don't mind handling being treasurer. But it's the frustration of having no go-to person for the Conservation Commission. Who knows where the stuff is that we might need or look for. Who would I go to, Mary, to see who's really responsible for that? Who's in charge of the secretaries in the town hall who would know?
I would say Mary Beth. But I'm not sure. I don't think Roxanne is anymore.
No, she isn't.
Right, so I'm going to say Mary Beth.
Because I went to Roxanne feeling she was my last resort, that she'd been here the most. And would at least have an idea of who should take care of what, you know. So she could give me the information that she had historically. But she couldn't give me anything up to date because she doesn't have that.
Right, I'd say Mary Beth.
Okay. So maybe I'll follow it up that way and say. Who is the one person I can go to when I have something I need for the Conservation Commission and. And see if that makes a difference, but up till now, I've not. Been able to do that. But if we table it till next month, maybe I can come back and give a better overview of what the treasurer does. Because what I've been doing would make the job really frustrating and nobody else would want to take it anyhow, so. And that's not a good thing, you know, it it should be relatively easy to just take care of routine things. Ask for, you know, what you need and. Because I think somehow the paid employees of the town should be responsible to the volunteers on commissions. I think that's the way it's supposed to work. I'm not saying anybody's ever been rude or. But you got to find the person, the person who's responsible for that piece, and that's been difficult. What's your experience been, Mike?
Whenever I deal with Nicole, she's always been very good. But there are things like you say that Nicole, things that happened before she was there, and she probably couldn't tell you either. It's not because she doesn't want to, it's, but I've never had a problem with Nicole.
No, it just doesn't get passed on.
It it doesn't seem to, no. There seems to be. An example would be when the town hall was closed, I went to get the mail for the Conservation Commission. Nobody seemed to know where the heck it was.
Yeah.
That's all. But other than that, no, I've never had.
No, nobody's, nobody's rude or says I'm not going to help you or nothing.
But they just.
Yeah. Exactly.
You know. So I just.
I, now that I know where the file cabinet is, I have a better handle on which office to go to. And say I was told there's a file behind this desk.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's a list on it that is the index of all the material that's in there.
Okay. I will follow up on that, and maybe somehow within the Conservation Commission. We have to have a list for each of these positions of who you can go to. To get the information you might need. You know, like the person who does our minutes or and their phone number. And if everybody on the commission had that information, you'd easily be able to back up somebody else or step into a position. That you could do that, where right now. I don't believe that information is out there for commission members to be able to do. When we tried to look up all that stuff for Whitehall. You know, what it was the same idea, nobody knew where anything was, you know, or how to get to it or. What happened to it or, so that's just been my experience.
Anything that really has to deal with us, including. Minutes that go back years, things that nature. Remember I did that a couple, three years ago, I compiled all that stuff and I put all the files and I called through everything that was useful. Everything is in that file cabinet. So if we need anything, we can go there ourselves. If somebody else needs to look up something for us, it's in there.
So. And this is an example because I didn't do it. If I had gone, I did go to Nicole when I went looking for information. And apparently Nicole doesn't know about that file. Because she never said to me, oh, let's go look in the file. Because Conservation Commission has a file for that, so that's just a. You know, a piece of the.
It was never passed on by a predecessor, that's all.
Correct, yeah, yeah. But I will follow it. And then we could put that whole. Mechanism for getting a purchase order and how to do that appropriately. Every member on the commission probably should have a copy of that. Because at any time, you could be the person going to get the paint or anything else we might need. And it would be worthwhile to know this is. The procedure for creating the purchase order for what you're going to need. I mean.
It'd be nice to have those files in a digital location that's easily accessible. I don't know if like the Conservation Commission has like a, you know, if the if the town has like a shared drive that, you know. We could keep files on. Do you, does anyone know?
Look that up. Do you know, Mary, is there?
I don't know. If nothing else, we could do a Google Drive or something like that and scan things in ourselves and make one for us. It would take a little time, but it would be hard.
That's a good idea, like just a place for us, like for the Conservation Commission members to access, you know, like the roles and responsibilities of the commission of, you know, the positions of.
The people we deal with.
Yeah, how to, it would be nice to have that, you know, and it's information that since it'd be just for us, it doesn't need to be on the website, you know, but to have it. You know, public, available that we could just readily go into would be really helpful.
Yep. People's names and their phone number at the town hall. You know, you know, easy access to get to those. I mean, it sounds like a simple thing, but you have to go through a huge thing on the town website to get to who you want. And then you have to guess, is this the right person sometimes? So, yeah, all that might be useful.
Yeah, I already have a lot of, you know, like digital files with like the maps and the logo and the, just like the trail descriptions. I don't know, like the survey results that we did. I don't know, like the survey results that we did, like there is already a lot of digital files that are are already on my Google Drive, already have my own like personal, you know, Conservation Commission folders, so. This will be a project. Maybe we could take, you know, next month or so.
Maybe you can do like an index of what you have.
Is there a town?
Go ahead.
Sorry. I was going to ask, is there a town Google Drive? Does the Conservation Commission possibly already have a folder?
That'd be nice. That's what I was wondering.
Or could there be a Conservation Commission, I mean, I'm guessing the town does have Google Drive for some you know, entities like the Town Council that would meet frequently and have a lot of paperwork. So I wonder if that's some, who would we ask? That's the question, right? Nicole, right?
So Julie, what happens to the minutes you take?
They get published and there's they get published on iCompass.
End up in the town clerk's office. She's the key.
Everything.
I don't know. I'm sure that they're available online. There's like this document center thing where you town website in Google or you can search for the minutes of each meeting. I just upload them. I just publish them onto the web when I'm done. But I don't know how they're stored or how we could add things like non-minutes or additional things to this document center in a way that because I have a I have a login for this iCompass. I'm sure everybody can get a login for the iCompass. But I'm not sure how like I'm, since I'm the secretary, I can do these minutes with my login. But like my husband has an iCompass login, but he can't do our minutes just because he has a login. So there's some permission thing that happens that I'm not sure what.
They do have file folders and I think most people can access the stuff in them. I'm pretty sure we could add stuff, but it's not user friendly to find anything in there. Like it's really an awful way of storing files.
Yeah.
Think it would be, I think it would be more work than it was work would be work to upload everything into something like that, that would just be hard to access. It is not a good portal.
Google Drive would be nice just because it's so
Very easy. Yeah. And most people have a Google account, so you can share it with most people already, you know, and if not, you can still share it with people with other email addresses and it's so much more user friendly. We'd be able to, you know, set up folders the way we want them because everything's kind of everywhere all willy nilly. When you go into the the town portal, it's very hard to find anything.
You can't find anything.
Yeah, you'd better have a lot of time and a lot of patience.
So Mike, how does this get affected by the issues of meetings outside of meetings? If you set up something that you can access like this, does this have anything to do with those issues?
You set up a meeting outside?
You know, when like
Freedom of Information Act?
Yeah.
I mean, if it's just references and not things we're actually discussing, I don't see that that would be an issue, would it?
Right. No, we're not. No, these are just, these are just records. These are just
This is informational stuff, like you said, Hillary.
Information, just records. It's not any anything deliberated or discussed or anything else like that. So
Okay.
It would not violate any freedom of information. You know, if you want to go look at what we got, you know, look what they got, you know, it's perfectly fine. You could, you know. I mean, it's a piece of paper posted right in front of the file cabinet telling you everything's in there. So, I mean, you know, it's not hidden, but no, no. Alrighty, so what we'll do is we'll table the Treasurer's nomination and appointment to the next meeting. Alrighty. Is there any other new business?
I'm sorry, drag this on. I have two things I forgot to mention earlier. One, I'm giving a presentation through the library tomorrow. It's on Trails in Ledyard. It's similar to the presentation that I gave to the Lions Club back in November. And
The Rotary.
What?
The Rotary Club.
Sorry, sorry, yes. Sorry. So and and the library told me that we have like more than 50 people registered for it. So I'm I'm excited. It'll be like a maybe a 40 minute presentation and then like 20 minutes for questions kind of thing. So that's tomorrow through the library.
That gonna be?
That is at 6:30.
Okay, so it's evening?
Mm hmm.
Alright.
And the others, the second thing that I forgot to mention was that when I talked to Scott Johnson, he told me that the Tri-Town Trail Association, the Tri-Town Trail is now under Parks and Rec. And so and then so as such, we had talked about adding the Tri-Town Trail Northern section to the list of trails as part of the Hike Ledged program and I got a sort of a map, a Tri-Town Trail map of the northern section to put on the website with all of the other trail maps.
Is there any other new business?
Yeah, is anybody going on a hike with me Saturday? So at 11, just just so you know, 11, 11 o'clock, I plan to be healthy for it. This is going to be my first time out and then prepping for it. We're going to be doing the Glacier Trail. We're going to do the yellow. We're doing the blues up to the, you know, the yellow and around. We're not going to do the back part of the trail. I don't think my body could sustain that right now. But I am going to be doing that. So I did volunteer for it a long time ago before I got COVID, before I got the pneumonia. And I plan to honor that commitment. I've been really wanting to volunteer more in this commission and do other things. So I'm really looking forward to it. So if anyone wants to join me, that's Saturday at 11.
So you're going to watch the weather, right?
Yeah, the weather's supposed to be good, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's good. Well, kind of. So we'll see. What, just real quick, any recommendation? Would you go up or down? I always like to go up the yellow.
My child thinks that the existence of the Yellow Trail is hilarious because why would anyone ever not want to climb on the rocks? So I have tried, although I have attempted to hike the Yellow Trail, I've never succeeded.
Never done it.
We always do. Yes, because why would you not climb on the rocks?
You know, I thought the same thing, but Ledgers at the library said, no, we'd rather just do the Yellow Trail. And I said, you know, okay, that that works for me. You know, then it wasn't matter which way do I want to go in? Do I want to go up the Yellow Trail or down the Yellow Trail? And like I, the way I always hiked it was I always go up the Yellow Trail and come around.
We, that's how we do the other way too. See, I would, I would think that would be better.
Appreciate that.
Where are you hiking on Saturday?
Glacier Trail.
Glacier. Okay, thank you.
Yep, at 11.
And that's through that, that's
The Ledger Library.
Yeah.
Like I said, I made this commitment before I got the COVID. I'm just glad I'm I'm coming out of this at the right time.
Well, we're glad you're coming out of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't fun.
Yeah, we won't be able to make it because we're still not doing group stuff like that, even if it's outside, but maybe we'll do it like a couple hours later or something. Solidarity.
Nothing else? Got to have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
All in favor?
I
I Opposed. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned. Eight oh four.
Thanks, everyone. Bye. Have a good night.
Good night.